All right. Good morning. Good morning. Good afternoon. Good evening. Whatever time of day that you're watching this, honey. I just cut the music short because it's acting up. Okay. I am Big Meach, honey, and this here is a Big Meach moment, and I'm coming to you a little lit differently. Because I think I'm on the drama of all of this, right? This is looking rather cute, don't you think? In any event, uh, I want to talk on a very serious matter. And uh, I'm gonna try not to be before you long. Um, but I do need to go on record with this, okay? Um, I'm recording this on April 3rd, 2024, okay? Uh, and the reason being is because two days ago, we had our city council meeting here in the city of College Park, Georgia. Um, and I want to share my, my deep, 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 deep disappointment um, with my city council. Cause there's a couple of things that, that's going on and I thought that grace was going to be given. However, when it wasn't, it leads me to ponder. Okay, what really is going on? Okay. Uh, now let me set the, let me set the tone here. Okay. Number one, I thoroughly believe and I am very optimistic about our city council. I really and truly believe that our new babies, uh, councilwoman, women, councilwomen, Jamil McKenzie and Tracy Arnold are wonderful additions to the council. Uh, I want to go on record and say that a lot of the heat that they may be receiving, um, is, is, I won't say it, it's premature. At the same time, it's, 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 uh, they are damage, collateral damage. That's what I'm trying to say. They are collateral damage because a lot of the anger that most of the citizens have are with our two uh, veteran council people. That's my councilman, Joe Carr and uh, Councilman Robert Gay. A lot of the stems, if you've heard me say this before, from actions that they have taken last year during uh, the last council season and under the last administration with Councilman uh, Ambrose Clay and Councilman Ken Allen on the council. And, and uh, as the elected officials during that particular administration, there were some things that had, that were going on and the public seemed to still be upset with them for their actions. Okay? Uh, since January 1st, 2024, and this new administration has been uh, sworn in and uh, taken office, a lot of the heat that uh, our new babies are getting is not necessarily warranted 100%, okay? Uh, a lot of it is residue from the election. Uh, folks are still in their feelings because of how the election went, more so with council, with, with uh, Ward 1 than with Ward 3. Um, a lot of folks are still in their feelings about it. And so now with every action that is taken, everything is upon the microscope. Okay? So now, having said that, oh, I'm, I am in full support of this council. Okay, I'm in full support, but being in full support does not mean that we do not keep them uh, at a high standard and to hold them accountable, okay, for actions taken. Now, I will say this too. I also believe in, in everybody is human. And humans are entitled to make mistakes, even if there's big mistakes. But at the same time of making these mistakes, if you're not doing anything to correct it or at least to nullify and avoid the situation from it becoming bigger, then that's where I seem to, I, I get into this, this, it's, it's, it's a, it's a aching in my craw. And it's like, okay, wait a minute. We've got to do better than what we're doing. Now, let's get into the meat and potatoes of this, okay? What is happening is my disappointment runs so deep, city council. My disappointment runs entirely so deep. It is a deep cut. When Councilwoman Tracy Arnold asked for a motion to change her vote on the 1.6 million dollar grant. All right? When she asked for that motion to go and no one seconded that motion so that it can fly? And y'all could take a vote on it? No one seconded the motion. At least if you had at least seconded the motion so that it could have been given a motion and you voted it down, that would have been another thing. Okay? It, you know, in the same wheelhouse, but it would have been a whole nother aspect of it, right? It, it would have been different. You guys did not even honor the motion of letting her have her say and letting her change her vote. Okay, that is where my disappointment runs and it runs deep and it runs thick. And I really do believe that all of you, all of you did her a disservice. You all did her a disservice. And here is where it is. This particular administration has been about a discrepancy that, and I'm gonna say this, that because it is an all African-American elected board, the scrutiny has been that this is gonna be a go along to get along uh, administration. The scrutiny has been that everybody is gonna, someone said that in one of the meetings, y'all gonna take turns with who's gonna be the bad guy for the day, so that way it could still be a three to one vote so that the mayor doesn't get an opportunity to speak. That was said by, by the citizens, okay? Forgetting that the mayor doesn't have a vote unless there's a tie. Okay? But all of these perceptions of duplicity and, and nefarious dealings, and I don't like using the word corruption, but that's the one that everybody wanna throw at you guys. Corruption. I wanna say duplicitous, okay? Because what it seems as though, what we have, and I understand the intentions behind it may be the greatest intentions. Because we're looking at garnering money for the city. We're looking at this 1.6 million to do great so that we can offset some of the costs of projects and stuff we need in each particular ward. And we got a surplus of money that we could use versus having to take it from the general fund versus having it being um, uh, uh, raising taxes or trying to come up with other kinds of fundraisers for this. I get it. I understand it. However, the parts that you guys are failing to hear and this here is what is what's driving us into these ethers. Okay? The part that you're failing to hear is that the citizens are saying, do not do this. The citizens are saying, we don't want this. Okay? That's what the citizens, your, all of your constituents are saying, well, at least the majority of them. Let me go on record and say this. I am one who was supporting this project. I am one who said, yes, I can see this working as long as all of the guidelines that we have a professional, Ambrose Clay, Councilman, who had put all these stipulations in, in, in check and say, yes, make sure all of these things are in place. Once we get this in place, this would be a workable project. I'm still stuck on him saying, if this were in my basement, it's safe enough to where I could put this in my basement and I would have no problem with it. That's what rings in my ears. Okay? And this is from someone who speaks the language of technology and energy and all of that, that, that this particular project garners, right? My trepidation with this particular deal, number one, we don't have any other people who are the professionals on our team. We've been relying on all of their information. Okay? We don't have any other professionals as strong as Ambrose or stronger that's on our team that says, okay, let's look at the data. We don't have anyone else on our team that is pushing for this in the way that will give the citizens enough, um, enough leeway to, to have of, of that moment of silence and, and, uh, not silence, that moment of peace and are able to exhale and say, okay, we can trust this. Okay? We don't have that. What we have, we got the people who are coming with the pro, with the project, who are doing all of the talking. When you came to and, and did the town hall meeting, you had the one guy there, John, who was giving us an, an overview of what it was supposed to be. However, he wasn't one of the experts. You had next era there. Why didn't they not get up and speak to the people? They should have spoken. They're the ones running this project. Okay? They should have spoken. They should have stood up there and, and, and gone through and took those hard questions. All right? I'm still on the, on, on the idea that in, in support of the project because a lot of this is based on fear. A lot of this is based on the data of all the, you know, the horrific things that have happened. And we all know how dangerous it can be. And I still stand on, we have so many gas stations in our area right now. Okay, we here in College Park just in, we, we are 11 square miles. And I wanna say within, I don't think it's a five mile radius, we have one, two, three, four, five, uh, six, seven, eight. That's eight gas stations that I'm looking at right now. That's on Main Street and Gobby, and I'm sorry. Yeah, I got, we got one on Gobby Road. We got, no, technically two on Gobby Road. Three, that's the third, three right there at, at, at Old National and Gobby. We got two right here at Old National just before the freeway. Then I got diesel fuel right here down the street on Sullivan Row. Not to mention the service station, and I believe that's the City of College Park service station that's up the street here, or is it Southport? No, not Southampton. Uh, whatever the name of the street is behind the Coca-Cola plant. Those are all fueling stations, okay, where we have gas and petroleum and can, in these neighborhoods. Okay, this is our neighbor. And I know that when all of these were coming up, in fact, the, the brand new ones that, that were added since I've been here, we were like, okay, why do we need another gas station? Okay, we all know the dangers of what gasoline does and care. We know what the dangers are. And my point is, is that we're already living in these kinds of conditions to where, if we're talking about, you know, we didn't harp on the fear of folks smoking, folks leaving their car running. You know, we see on the news that people are shooting at these gas stations could cause things. We see that, you know, sometimes folks drive into stuff and, and lose, you know, they have medical emergencies and things of that nature. So the fear mongering that has taken place with this project, you know, and, and I understand it, it's not unwarranted or whatever, and I've said this before. But that there is what the driving factor versus us looking at the whole thing in its entirety. Okay? So that's why I was want to support it, but with the stipulations, at the, at Monday's meeting, uh, Mr. Mos James came up very theatrically. He tickled me, honey, because it was effective. Okay? When he said that, use your words against you. Okay? And then going back to look at the metadata, and I think that's something that no one was counting on. I don't think that anyone was counting on someone being able to look at what's going on. And everything that's being outlined, city council, it is looking as if you guys are trying to hide something all in the name of saying, this is good for the city. Now, I do not personally believe that you guys are, are in this to pocket money into your personal accounts. I do not believe that. No one's gonna make me, and no one is going to make me accept that as an answer. But what I am going to say is, why are we rushing to get this money, this 1.6 million? That's the piece that no one is making make sense. That's the piece when folks are asking questions, everybody gets quiet, everybody is saying this, even, even um, at the council meeting, uh, uh, Madam Chairwoman McKenzie, you were, you were trying to explain uh, the language that, that the town hall went out and then city attorney was like, no, there's some legal things that, that we need to explain, and I wasn't gonna get into that right now. So even still, there's some legal stuff that's going on that either we're not privy to yet, or, and y'all need to say, listen, there's some behind the scenes stuff that we can't get into because it was done in executive session or whatever this is, whatever that is. What we are asking for or is the information. We need the information to soothe our minds, let us get very peaceful and, 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 and to say, okay, we can trust that you doing what you're doing. Right now, as it stands, there is no way, and y'all know I champion you guys. I can't champion this anymore. I can't champion this because you are giving all of the naysayers, all of the key components that they have been saying about you guys from day one. You're giving them all of the key components to say that this administration is poppycock. You're giving it to them. And I am still here saying, there's something more to this. There's something more because it's not on the surface. And yes, as much as, as much as Mos James has done with the videos and splicing this together, it looks a certain way. This looks very bad. This looks horrible. All right? But I keep hearing that, okay, we got this, we got this, we got this. And no one is bringing this forward. Either y'all going to put this project out and give us all of the information in truth? Or you guys need to go and reconsider this and take the L. Take that L and say, you know what? We towed this up. We towed this up. This is not what you want. Okay, we thought we were gonna push this through because we're looking at the bigger picture. I wanted to do this for College Park and et cetera, et cetera. Okay? However, something, something is in the mess. Now, I, I got conflicting information. On one side, I got that the city of South Fulton uh, was offered these same kinds of concessions and this, that, and the other. All right? And, and that they're entertaining this. I also get that, uh, I'm, I'm also understanding that the city of South Fulton is supposed to be the ones who green light the project because they got to do their part for the project. We are responsible for the rezoning because the land is ours. But because the jurisdiction is in South Fulton, they have to green light the project. Now, that's been my thought. I'm now told, no, all of this is on us. All of this is on us because this is our land and that the city of South Fulton has contacted us. Our people via emails, via this, via that, saying that, please don't do this, please don't do this because my citizens don't want it. And we seem as though we are ignoring our neighbors. My question is, why? What is the rush? Why do, are we ushering this through as if there's no time, as if time is of the essence on your part? What is it that we're not understanding? I need to, I, that's the part that we need to get. And if it's too complicated to explain, if it's too complicated to explain, then perhaps that means that this is not the right project. Perhaps that means that we need to look at something else. Hmm. Perhaps this is what that means. Okay? And I'm sitting up here now, I wanna go right by that particular piece of land because I need to see it. I don't know what it looks like. But if we got that kind of space that can house this kind of project, how come we are not looking at that for affordable housing and carrying on? Since nobody seemed to want it in their neighborhoods. Now, how about that? I ain't gonna go on that. That's a whole different subject. Okay? But if that land is, is that kind of land and it's already in residential space and, and everybody's complaining that this is going to take effect to, for the residents, then how come we not just scrap this project and find, we got, we have builders that came to buy it during my term that's looking for land to build affordable homes? How come we're not looking at that? I'm, I'm, I'm just perplexed with that. I'm so perplexed with that. And I had to call that out because babies listen, mm-mm, mm-mm. I don't like how this is looking. I do not like how this is looking. And, and quite frankly, everyone knows that I have a personal relationship with Councilman McKenzie. Everyone knows that uh, Councilman Joe Carr is my councilman. Now, we don't have the best of relationships, but we are very amicable. Uh, everyone knows that Tracy Arnold and I are, are developing relationships. They, I love her like a sister. And everyone knows that, that Councilman Gay and I have a contemptuous relationship. However, we able, we are able to be very amicable and we know how to listen to one another when we can sit down and talk and, and appreciate one another. What? We're able to do that. Okay? So, and we all know that. And then let me say this about the mayor. The mayor and I, our relationship is strained because we're still trying to build one. Uh, coming through the campaign trail or whatever, it has been, oh, not yet. I'm sorry. My phone is ringing. Uh, hold on, y'all, y'all leave me a message, honey. Um, um, our relationship scene is a little strained, especially after coming off of the mayor's campaign or whatever. Um, I would like to establish something further, but I don't know if that's something that she wants because she becomes very standoffish with me at times. And I, and I'm gonna take it as protection because she really don't know me. You know what I'm saying? And that's cool. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not tripping on that. It's just that we could, we could do better with having a better relationship. Okay? And that's on both of our parts. And I'm gonna take my own responsibility and, and that, that's on both of our parts. All right? Um, so having said all that, it, this, this particular thing disturbs me because I do not want to have any thoughts or anything that uh, this is, this is beyond just a misstep and a miscalculation. I refuse to believe that this is any kind of corruption. I, I just wanna, I would say duplicitous because it has the ring that this is, this, this is deceiving. All right? With everything that came out that Mos has done uh, with the metadata, and I don't think anybody was, was expecting anybody to do that kind of research. Uh, the metadata, the metadata, and I see that's gonna be the new word now. Metadata. Okay? Uh, even mayor says that uh, Mr. James is not the only one who knows how to, how to collect and work with the metadata. Okay, which I'm gonna get into that in just a second. Um, so with that, now that we able to cross-reference the cross-reference and get into some things, honey, we need to look at this. We need to look at this. And again, I'm going to, I'm going to implore all of you. Take the L. Take the L. Take the L, baby. Because right now, this is political suicide. We have an election coming up next year for, for wards 2 and 4. Uh, Councilman Gay and Councilman Carr. Yes. Okay, so by 2026, we'll have a brand new council anyway if they get voted out. Okay? So now what are we looking at? Okay, what are we looking at? And here's something, let me throw this in the mix too. We rallied for you to be the mayor pro temp, uh, Councilman Gay. And your pro temp status got you looking like you are doing whatever because you reintroduced this notion, this motion or whatever. You reintroduced it. Now, we, we're here. Okay? And it seems as though this is, this is going along with your character that folks know you to do. We're trying to backdoor something in. And this is you as the pro temp. All right? Now, we've, I'm one who championed you to, to be the mayor pro temp because I said, at least put the man up in there. He is the elected official. He needs to know what's going on and we need to see how he's going to work. You have been very kind. You have, um, now, I've been on the, that you, that you like to get on. You have been very, very amicable uh, behind the desk. And you have been calm, like I said, up until recently. But now with this particular move, no, this is not, this is, this here is only saying to your character. Okay, that the people have perceived you to be in all the time that you have been in that seat. Okay? I'm thoroughly disappointed that you guys did not give uh, Councilwoman Arnold uh, the, the, the opportunity to change her vote. That was wrong. That was wrong in every sense of the word and every language that you could fathom. Wrong. That was wrong. And like I said, you could have at least accepted the, the motion and let it go to a vote. If y'all had at least done that, it wouldn't be as bad as it is. But that there just completely nailed whatever, whatever left of the coffin that was, that just nailed the coffin. Completely shut on this deal. It nailed it shut. It nailed it. Okay? And I'm thoroughly disappointed. Thoroughly, 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 thoroughly disappointed. Because of course, the rumors have it. Now, I don't know what's true or what's not. The rumors have it that uh, she reached out to everyone and everyone was saying, you know, listen, I wanna change my vote. And, and then everyone had a story. If it wasn't, oh, there's nothing we could do about it. If it wasn't, oh, honey, you got, you got to, you know, take one for the team because you got to know how this work, whatever that is. I'm, I'm just saying what the grapevine is saying. I don't know what's true and what's not. But it was, it was a damn shame that she had to go into her report and, and, and release a statement that says that she was not given all of the facts surrounding the, surrounding the project prior to making her vote. And that she wants to go on record that she wants to change her vote and was not given the opportunity. That doesn't look good at all. That does not look good at all. Not at all. At all. Okay? Now, I'm going to play something. It's kinda long, but I, I wanted to play this in its entirety. I need for you to hear this because this where my disappointment turned into anger. Look, before I play this, let me, let me do one more step. And this has been said too. But I'm gonna go to my councilman here, Councilman Joe Carr. Now, it's been said in the documentation that can, that Mr. James has done. You voted no for the project, but you're saying yes to the grant. Okay? Okay? However, you are so silent about this. It is crazy. You are not saying why you voted no. You have not put that out there for the public, to, for the public to sit down and to ascertain, to hear where you are. You haven't even said why the grant money is important. If you don't want the project, why are you accepting their money? That there is, is where folks are hollering corruption. Because of like, okay, what are we doing here? And why have you not supported Councilwoman Arnold? If you said no, and she wanted to change her vote to no, does that mean that would have given it a tie? And then mayor would have had to vote? Is that what that means? Because if that's what that means, you see what I'm saying? When I say y'all are giving the naysayers the ammunition to blow y'all the hell up? If that's what that means, boom, how can I be out here trying to defend and say that I'm optimistic about a council? And y'all are giving the naysayers all of the damn tools to blow you to bits? This is not what's making sense. And we wanna make sure that we are doing the right thing. Right. The right thing. And what I don't want this to become is that you guys trying to act as if you know better than what we want. That is not going to happen in this day and age. Okay? If the citizen says this, whether you agree with it or not, because you two are a citizen, now, huh, let's go, let's go there. You two are a citizen of this city. But you are the proxy. You are the representative of your ward. Okay? So if your constituents are saying this, So if your constituents are saying this, and we doing the democratic process of majority rules, then regardless of what your personal feelings are, you have to stand in alignment with the citizens and put that on record. I personally believe in this project, however, due to the outpouring of what my constituents are saying, I have to stand with my constituents and say, I vote one way, whatever this, whatever, whatever they're saying. In this case, the constituents are saying no to this rezoning. And Councilman Carr, what you have done there, said that you do, you, you're talking out of both sides of your mouth right there. How are you gonna say no? And then when Councilwoman Arnold wants to change her vote to no, you don't support her. That ain't making sense. That ain't making sense. That ain't making sense. That's not making any sense. That's not making sense. That's not making sense. And did you see how you gave another, that's another nugget going over there to the duplicitous file? That's another nugget going over there into the, okay, pretty soon it's gonna, the balance is gonna be way up. Duplicity is gonna be up here. Or, or truth, and all the weight gonna be here. Boom. Weight it down. Truth is gonna be way up here. Here? That ain't, that's not making sense. But here is where my disappointment turned into anger. Cause I was there to see this in real time. And when I saw this, this right here speaks volumes to everyone. And there's a, there's a point in here that I'm going to talk about on the other side of this. Because I don't believe that the mayor had the right to do this. Um, I need to check the charter because from what I'm understanding, no one is supposed to go directly to uh, department heads or whatever to ask of anything. They're supposed to go through the city manager. But let me play this and I'll come to you on the other side.
City manager's report? Report of mayor and council, starting with Mayor Mottevroom.
Dr. Etta Dearen, I sent you an email earlier today at 1:32 PM asking you to forward any subsequent correspondence that you'd received from Southwest Atlanta Energy Storage or Next Era regarding the zero welcome all road rezoning since Thursday, March 21st, correct?
Yes, and I, I sent the document to you.
And then you attached a letter received after March 21st and then you said the former documents were dated March 18th and 19th, and that was at 3:24 PM. Is that correct?
The initial, yes.
Yes, sir.
And then after that send.
And then I asked you to forward the correspondence in which you received the letter. Correct? The, the, the most updated letter that Mr. James was talking about, correct?
Yeah, yes, I forwarded that to you, yes ma'am.
Yes, and I asked you to send the correspondence in which you'd received the letter, correct?
And I stated to you, it was hand delivered.
And I asked you by whom? Is that correct?
Um, ma'am, you requested for the document and I gave you the document.
I asked you.
And I'm not obligated to tell you, I told you, I received it. It was hand delivered. And I'm, you know.
And, and I asked you by whom? Is that correct? I asked you, I asked you by whom? At, at, at 3:31 PM, is that correct?
Yes, you did. But I, you asked for the document.
And then your response at 3:33 PM was that, Mayor, you requested the document and you got it. Is that correct? I'm still on my report, sir? Nope, sir, this is my report.
Uh, with all due respect, I think this is a matter of city attorney that probably needs to be discussed in executive session.
There is nothing regarding litigation, real estate or personnel.
Well, to me, it seems like a suggestion.
Dr. Etta Dearen? Dr. Etta Dearen?
This, this is crossing the line, you know, becoming like harassment. That's what I, that's.
Dr. Etta Dearen?
Document, I gave it to you. Did, did I give you, did I give you the document? Yes or no?
And I, yes, sir, you, you gave me the document and then I asked you who, from whom you received it. And now, since you didn't answer me, I'm gonna ask you again. Who hand-delivered the document?
It's, it's really funny. I gave you the document you asked for.
Dr. Etta Dearen, I'll ask you again. Who hand-delivered the document?
As I stated, it doesn't have anything to do with the document. I gave you the document you requested for. And, and that's it.
Dr. Etta Dearen, who hand-delivered the document?
Ms. Mayo, you asked for a document. I gave you, I gave you the document. And, and that part, that's it.
Are you refusing to answer my question?
You call it whatever you want to call it, but are you, you crossing the line of, to me, now it seems like you're trying to harass. That, that's, that's, you know, and city attorney, I want to file, you know, file the motion. Because it's getting ridiculous now. You asked for the document. I gave you the document. Did I, did I not give you the document?
Dr. Etta Dearen, you did give me the document.
Okay, so.
And then, and then you told.
What, what, I mean, what does it have to do with where I got the documents from?
Dr. Etta Dearen, there is a great deal of community interest in this particular issue. I'm asking you one more time. Who hand-delivered the document to you?
Whoever gave me the document don't have nothing to do with anything. I gave you the document you requested for, and that's it.
Dr. Etta Dearen, the document you sent me, because I'm, Mr. James is not the only person who can handle metadata.
Mr. James, no, the other one did that what?
That can handle metadata. That document wasn't hand-delivered to you.
Yes, it was. If, if you were here Thursday, you would have got the same document I got.
The document you sent me was created by Melissa Schroder on Thursday. The metadata reflects that.
And, and.
So Dr. Etta Dearen, I'm gonna ask you one more time.
Okay.
Please send me the correspondence.
It was hand-delivered.
By whom?
I, I don't have to answer you, ma'am. I gave you the document you requested for, and that's it.
Why do you not want to answer this question, sir?
It, it's, it's not relevant to anything, and that's why. It's not relevant.
Mr. Hicks? Hi, Mr. Hicks, how are you? I'm doing well. And, um, Ms. Ames, I will be making a request for any emails from Melissa Schroder. Um, and please understand that I will need to see those as quickly as possible. Uh, because the metadata does not reflect that this was a hand-delivered document. And I'm very concerned about the what, what's being represented in regard to this particular issue. And I'm deeply disappointed that you consider a direct question. By whom was this document hand-delivered? Harassment. Because it's very straightforward.
I, I gave you an answer. You requested for the document. I gave you the document and that should be the end of it. Where, I, you know, I mean.
But it's not.
Why not?
It is not.
Well, to me, it is.
One of us is here to represent the citizens of College Park.
Okay.
And if you can't answer that question tonight,
Okay.
I believe there's probably some people who are watching this or who will watch it tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
Who will want that same answer.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For my clarity?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you said all emails from Melissa Schroder. Is there a specific timeframe and receiver?
Uh, any, any receiver.
Oh, you said any.
Any receiver from Melissa Schroder, uh, from Next and.
All right. And we are back. I just put a zinc molderer in, so if I'm smacking, please forgive me. All right, now y'all heard that diatribe. Okay? I am thoroughly thoroughly pissed at this exchange. What is the problem with answering that question? Because all of that deflecting did nothing but add more fuel to this corruption duplicitous fire. That's getting on my nerves. I'm trying to talk. All of that, all of those histrionics right there were unnecessary. And it show that, okay, what are you guys doing? What are you doing? What are you doing? Now, I don't know what y'all did to, to get ready for this particular council meeting. But I know that everybody got telephones, everybody got text messages in the car and all. I see everybody up there texting and carrying on throughout the meeting. Why in the hell did y'all tell him to shut his mouth? Or at least answer the damn question? Yeah, I'm hot. I'm so hot. I am so hot. Because all of that, and then, and then, then you wanted to get very brazen. And now you want to challenge the mayor. And then you want to call that this harassment, Dr. Etta Dearen. Harassment because she's asking you a question that you are refusing to answer. If you had said in answer, I got it, it was hand-delivered from a messenger. By whom? You could have gave a name. Who, who are you in correspondence with? You said, I gave you the letter. What, who was the letter from? Because that, listen, y'all have to understand, and as I'm hearing this, and, and let me be transparent, the term metadata and carrying on, I want to research how to, how to get into it. See, now I want to look at how things are created, when they are created. So I'm sure that's like the IP address and carrying on and who sent it to where. You, you, you know what I'm saying? Follow the trail. Because that's why we have IP addresses on your phone, on your computers and carrying on. That's how they're able to track you from your IP address. So if that's the case, there is, it's gonna be telltale signs of how this stuff came in, when it came in. All right, now, they've gotten to the point where they could pinpoint the time that it was created. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm fishing about that. I don't know about the time that it was created. Maybe the time it was received, perhaps. I don't know about the time that I'm sitting up there actually created the document. Now that there was kind of sketchy to me. But at the same time, they're able to, to track it now. So all of this back and forth that we're doing, city council and city manager, this here, this is why we're having a difficult time. And we keep saying, come clean. Everybody's running on transparency. We done all said it. We've all said that in, in this campaign election and this, that and the other. And I'm gonna keep saying transparency should never be damage control. If I'm, I wouldn't open in the first place, I have nothing to go back to correct. This is the frustration. This is the anger. This is why words like recall is coming up. I don't believe. Listen, I do not believe that y'all want to recall Jemail, y'all want to recall Trey. I don't believe that y'all do. Well, let me take, take that back. Y'all do want to get Jemail out of there because y'all still mad that Karen did not win. Okay? For whatever reasons, you're still mad about that. And okay, if that's how you feel, that's how you feel. But at the same time, we have to allow folks to be human. That's what I'm saying. Take the L on this one. Come back. Say, listen, all right, you twisted our arms. We heard you. We shouldn't have ignored you from the jump. We thought we were doing the right thing by trying to chase down this money because we need this money for other things. You keep saying that you want us to do something. We're trying to make a difference. But okay, this project was not the project. We gonna take the L. That y'all razzle-dazzle us because you know, once you take this, then of course they're gonna talk about you like a dog for about another 90 days. And then you know, when you do something else wrong, they're gonna bring this back up. Okay? Take the L and move on. Because right now, what folks are hearing is that you, you ignoring me because you want to do you. And I, and I swear, my core said that that's not what this is. My core says that y'all thought that this was a grand opportunity to get this little coin because y'all trying to do stuff to have money in the surplus of the city. But honeys, like the one woman said, if they're offering 1.6 million, okay? When they should have been offering more than that. In fact, I think Ambrose said that once. I think Joe Carr said that once. That is not enough money. Yes, we took $50,000. They gave us $50,000, what, in 2023 for, for, um, College Park Elementary? That was, that was, that was cute though, you know, kind ingestion money. You know? But listen, this is just like trying to go to the NFL or, or when colleges are trying to draft that star player. Everybody coming out of the woodwork so that they can get you to sign a contract. Everybody's showing you all of the good stuff. No one is asking what protocols are in place. We did not take into consideration and listen. If everything that Moses said is true, that the letter that Ambrose Clay wrote and said that if you read the document, it does not include my regulations, that my suggestion for the regulations in order to be safe. If that's true, that I'm not with this project at all. If that is true, I will not stand by that project because I said, I stood by it because we had a professional who speak the language that said it works if these things are in place. And like I said, I keep hearing it in my ear, with these things in place, it would be safe enough to put in my basement. When he said that, I'm like, wow. Cause he took the fear out of it. All of, all of the, the, the who'sy-whoosies and carrying on, he was able to give us a professional opinion on something that dangerous. Because we talking about batteries. Like if you missed it before, I'll say it here. We all have that. We just have it on the neighborhoods have lithium ion batteries because of how we do our phones and our computers. And we got radiation with the microwave. Everybody have at least four or five phones and a computer and, uh, PlayStations or whatever that require lithium ion batteries now. So we're already, there's battery concentration on a low scale. If you put all that together in the neighborhood, we don't, we, we can be that grid. So we're already doing it loosely. With all of the regulations and stuff that we know and all the, all the stuff. How, you, you didn't heard them say, don't talk on your phone with it charging. But we do it anyway, don't we? We know when the phone run hot, we got to put the damn thing down because it, it, it can cause a fire. We know this, but yet we do it anyway, don't we? So because of that, I'm like, okay, we can do this as long as those stipulations were in place. But if he, if anything about that letter is true and those things are not in place and you guys are not doing the due diligence and all of the research to say this is this, then what's the rush? How come we just sit down there and say this, 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 this and this? We got to do that. We've got, and then who's, who's our attorney on this? Did the city attorney look at this document to make sure that it was in compliance? I know with body, we always had, we always had to make sure whatever's in the contract that the attorney go over to make sure that every, that the language is corrected. Did we do that? I know we haven't signed a contract yet. Or did we? Is that why the rush? Because there's, there's, the ink got to dry. The ink haven't dried yet or y'all trying to get the ink to? What is this? See, we got too many speculations and I don't want to speculate. You guys are too intelligent of people to have us be played like. You guys are too intelligent of people to have us be played like this. You understand? This is too important to go down like this, from everybody who, y'all are very bright people. Very bright. And y'all know what this has the propensity of doing. So, in that, City Manager, I'm calling you out. Oh, yes, the hell I am. Because that display of, 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 I won't, yeah, I'm gonna say ignorance. That display of ignorance right there was ridiculously beneath the caliber of man that I thought you are. Okay? That was ridiculous. And for you to go public like that, the way that you did, when you could have said, "Can we table it?" You could have, somebody could have called for a recess or something. They could have said, "Wait a minute, let's take a recess, because this is getting hot." And then took her, or said, "Can we talk privately or whatever? Because I don't wanna go public with this. I'll, I'll speak with you later." You could have done something to where they didn't have to get ugly like that. No, sir, I'm calling you out. Cuz they didn't have to do that. That did not have to do that. You understand? I'm calling you out. Council, I'm calling all of y'all out. Cuz y'all didn't have to lead Tracy Arnold like that, and y'all did not, no. Not when she sit up there saying, "Okay, wait a minute," and she's doing the, "Okay, I towed this up, I didn't have all the information, let me change my vote, because this ain't right now. We got facts there that, no, this ain't, this ain't doing." Y'all threw her up under the bus. And y'all made her seem as though she's supposed to go along to get along, what everybody has been saying from day one that this council was going to be. And that's unfair. Jemail, you taking heat that's coming up on Joe and Roderick. But at the same time, sister, baby, I need for you to really look at this. I need for you to look at this. And I know, I know, your heart is, you know, this could do wonders for the community. But I need for you to reevaluate that. I need for you to reevaluate that and, and look at that contract. Because if, if what they are saying, and you're the one who spoke with Ambrose directly, and, and from predecessor to successor about this deal, if what Ambrose wrote and said that, "Looking at that, they did not put my measures in place," then the question becomes, how did you miss that? Because that there is what all of us were fighting on. Those of us who believed in the project is what he said. Remember, if we go back, what's the young man's name? He came up last night and spoke. He was the last one to speak last night. I can't think of his name. He said, the one who says, you know, "We're your grandparents, and we're your parents," and this, that, and the other. He said he had COPD. He said at the, at the last town hall, he said, "If it requires all of this to make this right, then maybe we ought not do it." Now, that was his thing. My whole thing was, if it requires all that, then that means the safety measures are in place to make sure that it would be safe. You know what I'm saying? The money issue, if we are saying that, you know, the fire chief said that we don't have the manpower. We need two more trucks and eight more, eight more officers, okay? Firefighters. They know that. They got trillions of, billions, at least billions of dollars. How come that's not the money that they offered us to make sure that we got the safety parameters in place? What about insurance? See, those kinda questions are what was needed to be asked and answered. So, that's where we are with this. Y'all threw Tracy under the bus, and I'm deeply, deeply disappointed about that. I'm deeply disappointed about that, because now, the question becomes, what is, what is the deal? What is the real deal about this project that has everyone so hell-bent on making sure that it goes forward? Give us those, that information so that we can see where you are. Cuz right now, we don't see where you are. We only hear that you are ignoring the people. And if you are ignoring the people, honey, that there is never good for anybody. Because that means you're going to break trust. You're going to break the trust. And for those of you who didn't have the trust from day one, this is going to be a long uphill battle. And now, they throwing out the word recall prematurely, I say. That's premature, and that's anger talking, okay? Because far as I'm concerned, it's this deal, and it's Stanley, it's the Stanley Hawthorne fiasco that says, "Oh, okay, no," all right? Cuz, and the Stanley Hawthorne goes with the albatross, all that's together, okay? So, because of that, that there does not necessarily warrant a recall for me. It says, "On-the-job training." It says, "I'm learning the job, and I'm trying to make sure that, you know, we get stuff in place. I'ma make some mistakes along the way, cuz I'm trying to understand the policies and this, that, and the other." But at the same time, they throwing that word out there. And it's all emotional, it's all emotional. But they throwing that word out there because you are not giving the people the idea that, that trust is there. If you break the trust, then, then innuendo and accusations and stuff will run free. City Council, City Manager, I'm asking you to do right by this. And Madam Mayor, I would give you, I would give you my kudos publicly. You ain't got nothing to do with this one. You have, you have, you have been the one who said no from the jump? You've been consistent? And now, you have been calling out truth to power? All of your boisterous voice, I'm saying it like that, cuz y'all know what I say at the meeting. You ain't silenced, sister, so stop playing that card. You ain't silenced. All of what you've done has been to expose that something ain't right about this. Either they not doing it right, or there's some misinformation, or something, whatever that is, that has everybody upset and could get Dr. Al, um, Al, I'm tearing his name, Al Adaria. I'm tearing his name up, I'm sorry. To get him to cut up the way that he did by not answering the question about by whom delivered the demand? If we could cut up like that, yes, something's wrong with this deal somewhere. Somewhere. And that is where it is. And I'ma go to the City Attorney, because whatever legal notes that need to be done, then that need to come public. All this secret talk and, you know, stop table and everything to Executive Session, and then not giving us the information when you come out that you're able to give. Because right now, the citizens have nothing. Nothing, okay? And that there is that. City Council, my disappointment runs deep. But it's not that it can't be corrected. You guys could come about this, and you come about this smelling, you could still smell cute. Okay, you don't have to be completely in the rubbish for this. But if you stay sitting in the manure too long, honey, the manure stops smelling. Okay? If you sitting there fertilizer a little bit too long, fertilizer will stop smelling, okay? Something ain't right, something rotten in the cotton, children. Something is rotten in the cotton. And we need to get to the bottom of that. And if you can't explain it to us to make it make sense, to where you could get us to change our minds, though, well, no, I know, I'ma have to be on that. Because if one, if that's true, that those stipulations that Councilman Clay had advised, if that's not in this deal, then no, I'm not behind it. Then no, I am not behind it. Because I, like I, I've said it already, I'm talking in circles now. So, no, let's get this together. If you can't explain it to where we can say yay, that you need to drop this project and listen to the people. Listen to the people, honey. Listen to the people. Cuz now, what I say during the campaign run, honey, I can't tell your story, but I can amplify the hell out of it. So, now, I'm amplifying the people's voices. The people saying no? The people saying no? The people said no. We don't want the 1.6 million? We don't want the project or whatever? No, we can get money elsewhere. Let's look at other avenues, and I think that's what we need to say to y'all. Let's look at other projects. Cuz right now, we just throwing y'all up under the bus for this. Let's look at other projects to benefit the city. This one is not the right one. Let's say it that way, so that we can stop being accusatory. Let's look at other projects, people. We don't have to rush to the, we don't have to get the dangling carrot, because we're not desperate. We are not desperate like that. 1.6 million, hell. For those of y'all who know, now, I don't, I've never seen 1.6 million dollars in cash. However, we know that when we talk of city government and carrying on, 1.6 million dollars is not really nothing. That's somebody's house. Somebody just paid that over on Rugby, or close to it. That's a house. So, that's what we giving this up for? That's what we doing all this, was so somebody could buy a house on Rugby Road, Rugby Avenue? Is that what this is for? I'ma let y'all powder on that. But I'm thoroughly, thoroughly disappointed with what the City Council did at this last meeting, okay? Now, let's do better, cuz I know that we can, I believe that we can, I know we can. I know we can. Right now, you know, we just trying to get through these bumps and these hurdles, because we really want the city to grow, we want this coin. But we got to do it in a way that's gonna make sense, okay? And if the people are saying no, baby, come on now, come on, all of y'all, all of you. And Joe, you said no, but you said yes to the coin, which is saying what? Which is saying what? You talking both sides of your neck. You can't say no to the, to the project and then yes to the coin, cuz that means you got them in your back pocket for something else down the line, right? Or that would be the, that would be the logical thought process, right? Which says what? Folks will start saying, "Oh, that's corrupt. That's duplicitous. That's deceitful. That's unscrupulous. That's unethical." See, all those words start to come into play when we do that. We could do better, we better than this, and I know that we are, cuz I know, I know that we are. I know it. I know it. Let's, let's, let's let the egos go. Let the egos go, okay? Let it go. Take that L, baby. Come back to the citizens and say, "You know what? We towed this up, we tow it up, babies. We tow it up. We tow it up." So, now, let's do it. Let's do it. Let, 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 let's, let's do this the right way. The same way how the, the, what we got, the lobbyists, when they went down there and tow up the doggone bill for the, for the, for the senior homestead taxes, the exempt thing? When they towed that up and didn't do right? And they had to come back and tell us, "We towed it up." And then we, how do you tow something up? When you got to, you supposed to do, we hired you to do a job, and you towed it up? How? Child, I got to go. I mean, and we'll talk later. Ciao. Hello?